Good evening. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Finance for Tuesday, May 20, 2025. Will you please come to order? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hanlon?
Here.
Copley?
Here.
Heinz?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Rossbert?
Here.
Sugmire?
Here.
Yurcheck?
Here.
And Williams?
Here. You've all had the opportunity to review the minutes of the Committee of the Whole for May 7, 2025. May have a motion to approve them.
I'll make that motion to accept the minutes from the May 7 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes of the Committee of the Whole for May 7, 2025 have been approved. Next item on the agenda is a call for an executive session.
Mr. President, I hereby move that we hold an executive session for preparing for conducting or reviewing collective bargaining strategy. And actually, we're going to have two executive sessions, so I'd like to make two motions, if at all possible.
Is it possible, Mr. Proudfoot?
Are they, I don't know if it's two different things.
It's both deals with collective bargaining.
I don't see why we couldn't just make one motion, go into executive session, and then discuss both, as long as they're under the parameters of what you are saying the reason is.
Second.
Sounds good. Call the roll.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Sugmire?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
And Williams?
Here. Yes. We are now in executive session. We please clear the chamber. They are under, or not being used for that, or will have to be used that way. So, so both of those items are important. The, the actual materials used are also important. We wanted to stay away from pavilion structures that look like something you might find in a parkland setting because of, it's in a parking lot. The, the recommendation from both vendors, as well as the design team, was that we use more of a steel structure scenario, as well as not a shingled roof line, but a metal roof line. And both of these particular kit structures that you see allow you to have those options and opportunities to use that. You'll notice also that we think there's importance placed upon protecting the columns in any parking lot structure like this. So, usually you do that through masonry applications. You can also do that through island applications and certain different things to protect it. I don't think we want to design it where we're just placing bollards around those columns, or something a little bit more than that. Some of the structures have gutter systems. Some structures do not have gutter systems. Almost all of the kits come installed, but they don't do flat work. By that, I mean they don't do concrete or stamp work, or something else. So, those would be additional costs, which have been factored into the request I've made for your consideration in terms of a supplement. So, I think that's basically what I want to mention to you tonight in regards to photos. The next set of documents you have are actually four pages, and they are conceptual layouts of the actual southwest parking lot, where the structure would be located in the rectangular or square box that's predominantly in the middle of most of the concepts for you. And I'll walk through a little bit of that. I think it's been noted earlier, before the meeting started, that first two items are, seem identical, and they are the same option. The only difference in those particular options is that one depicts parking, six to eight parking spaces underneath the structure. The, the next sheet, or sheet two, if you will, depicts no parking underneath the structure. That's the only difference there. A couple of items about Option A in general. So, an important element to the design of the parking lot layout is to align the alleyway between the north-southwest parking lot, that's tough to say, and the south-southwest parking lot. And so, there's got to be an alignment there. Because of the circulation you want in the parking lot, and the truck turning distances that you need in the parking lot, it doesn't align perfectly in any of the options, because you can't do that. But there's also an important element that we have to consider, and that is, there is an easement that runs along the west end of all those commercial properties that we have to stay out of. We're allowed to use it because we're also one of those entities that are, that are served by that easement, but we're trying to be cognizant of our neighbors and making sure that we maintain those access points. So, that's one of the elements. It moves the alignment of the ingress egress apron off of Mill Streets further west. That's important, because the way it's currently aligned is actually within the easement. So, it doesn't, it should not be in that location. So, we need to move it further west, and that's what one of the elements of this design achieves. You also see that there's a full ingress egress point proposed off of Watrusa, and that allows for, once you ingress into the lot, either turning north or south within the lot, which adds for that circulation aspect that we were trying to achieve throughout it. The layout is, is interesting. On, on the right, you see in the diagram, a little bit of the added, net added parking spots of about 35 spots. That would be with parking underneath the structure. I know, don't know if there are any thoughts or comments, but just turning to page two, or sheet two, if you will, eliminating that, you're losing about eight parking spots down the 20 added parking spots. I should say, and should have said, as I opened up, you know, there are pros and cons to every one of these designs, but I think these are the leading designs sort of in the clubhouse right now. And I think ultimately, the design team is looking for direction on where to move forward with the construction documents on some of these. As I said, sheet two's very, very similar, if not identical, other than the options within the layout of parking spots or no parking spots. Moving to the third sheet that you have in your handout, which is labeled as Option B, this changes a couple of items in the design. You're still maintaining that north-south ingress egress alley, if you will, aligned with the upper southwest parking lot, but you're changing a little bit of how the parking is aligned to the north of the structure. It has this, what I would call, three-space sort of island mark out. Ideally, or that's somewhat confusing to me as a user of the lot, potentially. You also have kind of what I would call a dead zone between that island and the north part of the structure. Again, here, we're contemplating no parking under the structure. I think we've heard some of those comments loud and clear. And we've changed the Watrusa entrance point to further north along Watrusa. Just gives a little bit better alignment to the northern park of that, northern part of the parking lot in that formation. Also, I would note for you down at the Mill Street entrance, there is a little bit of a bump out or island adjacent to the entrance. That potentially was attempting to address the need in the location for a dumpster area that is currently used by one of the occupants of the commercial adjoining uses. So, that might give you an opportunity to place a dumpster in that particular location. One of the negatives I would draw from, from this particular concept is handicap spots directly adjacent to the pocket park pergola. That's not ideal in, in terms of the way they're laid out, but in an attempt to try to look at the feasibility of that concept, you could move those handicap spots to that unique northern parking island, north of the structure. So, it is an option there. Moving to the last sheet in your handout, again, it's a very similar design, somewhat more of an aligned roadway alley, north-south between the parking areas, a different setup for the parking spots immediately north of the structure. Again, this concept does not include any parking underneath the structure, a little bit of a modified bump out on the Mill Street entrance, and a little bit of that northern Watrusa entrance. Little bit more streamlined in terms of 90-degree parking in and outs there, little bit narrower alleyways, although still allowing for 24-foot width, which is more than what's required in a parking lot alleyway. Those are our concepts for your consideration.
Is there any consideration for parallel, parallel parking?
Parallel parking, so there was. There were a couple of different angled parking ideas, and there were a couple of different parallel parking ideas. The drawbacks for both of those is you really kind of cut out, and you lost parking spots with both of those applications. Mr. Copley raises a good point for the council's knowledge. There's the traditional 90-degree parking, which usually allows for the most parking spaces in a given space. There are exceptions to that, but usually it does. There's 45-degree angle parking, and there's 60-degree angle parking, somewhat unusual in terms of some of the way you see those. But it's all about the location that you're proposing the parking lot in, and what works best in those situations. Certainly available for any questions or thoughts you might? I know there's been a lot of discussion in Committee, you know, Public Ways. Now's the time to ask directly Director Hiscott questions about this design.
On, on the A drawings, I do not see any designated handicap spots. Is it just an error not printing them on there, or?
It's not an error. They're, they're open for, normally, I think where, what you're looking at in the Option As is, if you're looking at the, the parking spots directly north of the structure, that's probably where they best go, because they don't work well right alongside of the pergola of the pocket park. They just, they won't work well there.
Okay. One of the questions I asked at Ways was, was the cost. Okay? Have you explored, I mean, looked hard at the cost, because that $400,000 plus $100,000 ask was just a shot in the sky, who say, you know, as you explained before?
Yeah, so let me, that's an excellent question, Mr. Copley. Let me again expound on that. So, when we went through the budgetary process for this particular project last year, I placed in the budget $100,000 structure sort of placeholder, not knowing what structure we were going to go with, not knowing what a design team recommendation would be, but knowing that the discussions of the subcommittee included having some structure to augment the pocket park. So, I put a placeholder in the budget. The reality is that placeholder was not enough, and I kind of knew that when I put it in there, but based upon the discussion, I didn't want to put a number which was pie in the sky, if you will. So, when we first started talking with the design team, they of course proposed a couple of different options for us. First of all, those design options were very, very large, almost encompassing the entire lot, as you see them in the concepts. That was more than we needed, and certainly was going to be cost prohibitive, and I was not going to bring those triple or quadruple project costs to you for your consideration. Didn't think that was needed, not what our community wanted, and probably not within our budgetary means. So, we greatly reduced down the size. We've been talking about a 50 by 60 structure, or perhaps even a 50 by 50, if we had to for this particular lot, and it would achieve what we needed in terms of establishing a gathering space, as well as giving us some additional parking options during the week. So, that's what we went with. When we started out, those pricings were coming in about a half a million dollars. That still seemed large, and, and we've done a lot of work in the last two months to try to work with vendors to narrow the scope and the elements that we might need, and I think we've done significant work in that, in that area for now. So, I will tell you, as I, I mentioned in a May 8 email to you all, you know, the request before you tonight is to consider a $400,000 supplemental, and that is still the request of the administration today. However, based upon some of the discussions we've had, the negotiations we've had, where we are in terms of the structure and what we need, if council was concerned about that $400,000 number, I would tell you that we probably could make do with a $300,000 supplement. That's me telling you that. I want to be honest with you, though. Without that extra 100, we may be challenged if we run into any constructibility issues or anything that I don't know as I sit here before you. So, so the 400 gave us a little bit of an allowance room. In addition to the kit and the other items of installation, 300,000, we're almost at zero allowance for the structure and anything we might come along. We'll still get the structure. We'll still get what I'm showing you. We'll still get something similar to those proposed photos. We just have no room if we run into a constructibility issue. As council knows, in projects, there are always seemingly some unknowns. We normally budget allowances in our, in our projects, just to allow for some of those things. We've run into that at the recent work projects. We've run into it at the playground, and we've run into it most recently at the Memorial North project. That is something that happens in construction today. So, trimming that back to 300,000, I would tell you, I'm committed to delivering for you and our community as to a structure that would be useful for that amount. We're just going to be cutting it pretty close budgetarily at that amount.
Does a 20% rule hold true with this project, this, like with any other projects that you can go 20% more for those unexpected things that you're talking about?
Normally, we've been working with Ms. Vicks at a 10% additional.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I think the state moved.
Yeah, they moved it to 20, but we've still been trying to live within that 10% rule, couldn't have been.
Yeah, state projects, I think, still 10%.
Yep. Ways Committee Chair Rossbert, you have anything, any comments?
I voiced many times about not liking the idea of parking under the structure, and I'm on hold of that. So, that would take A, right, the very first A right out of the equation. We are gaining some parking spaces with the building that we just, we had torn down. We're gaining parking. We're gaining great features for our community. I, $100,000, I know is a lot of money, and, but I think to make sure that, you know, I, I think we have enough faith and trust in the administration to say, hey, if we can do it at 300, let's do it, and we reserve the $100,000 back, but there's going to be overruns. Regardless of what you do today, there's going to be an overrun, so.
But we can do a supplemental through.
We could also do a supplemental, or we could, the other thing is, we could split the difference tonight and go 350. You know, I, I just don't want us to get into a situation where we're up against the clock, and we have to pull a supplemental in a short period of time. That, that's my biggest concern. You know, we've had some of those things happen with the park, and we were able to get through it. So, I, I'd like to see this move forward, and it's just in the, the matter of the amount that we authorize it to.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Heinz, I cut you off.
That's okay. I was just wondering, is there a big price difference between the one with gutters and the one without?
No, it's really more of a vendor option. Some provide those, some do not. Even the ones that do not, they, they recommend an entity to use for additions to gutters.
Yeah, you definitely want.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, we would definitely want that. Councilmember Parrish, you sit on the Ways Committee. Any comments?
No, I don't.
No comments, okay. Anything else from?
I would like to see this, this project move forward, and the, and the back parking lot finished up. I mean, it's been, was involved with Main Street Endeavour back in 2008 and '09, when the concepts were first drawn up, and, but again, to go ahead and put the, put the cap on this, and the pocket park, and everything else, especially with the infrastructure work that's going to be done in the next couple of years. For, for example, I know that the city has jump-started the, the concert series downtown, and to try and keep helping the businesses in the future with, with the infrastructure, all the work that's going to be done there. Streets won't be able to be closed for some of the larger concerts, so with this being finished, that's just one other aspect of getting more people downtown. We can go the other direction.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would also like to say that I support what Mr. Rossbert said about parking underneath.
Me too.
I don't think that parking underneath.
So, we have a lot of momentum going right now with everything we're doing in the town for infrastructure, and to better the community for our citizens. And I would hope that this council can move this forward and get things going. So. Any other comments? No? All right.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item. Draft legislation. Item number one. I could speak to that, Mr. President. So, this was an item that was discussed at Public Ways. It's a 195,000 sidewalk improvement project. This is something that we, we normally undertake. We're just looking to use CDVG dollars for this particular year. Okay, that's a Public Ways matter.
And we want to get this moving out of the way, so we said we would suspend and call this.
Okay.
That'll be ordinance number 25-086.
And I, ordinance number, item number two? Similar request, again, to go out for this item for street sweeping, was discussed at Public Ways. This is a $128,000 budget item.
And again, suspended call, so we can get our streets swept.
That includes for Memorial Day, as I read? We'll try.
That'll be 25-087.
Okay. Item number three. Mr. Ballack, do you want to speak to that one?
I can. Yes, this is for a snow removal piece of equipment for the airport. It's a 2025 cat loader with a snow pushbox bucket works to go along with it. It is replacing a old street snowplow truck that has currently been down there. It's kind of past its useful life.
Mr. Rossbert, question?
Yes. I have been asking for this snow removal equipment personally, as well as at Ways Committee several times, and I'm very much in favor of the cat, cat loader, but I'm worried about meeting the safety requirements. I brought up that before, safety requirements. And the FAA requires it to be from six inches to three feet within the first 50 feet. How will this, as a snowbox that just pushes snow, accomplish that?
So, the, the nice part about this, this piece of equipment is, it has the pushbox and a bucket, so you can push snow down to one end of the runway, take, take it off, put the bucket on, clear it off to the, to the side, so it's not an obstruction for any type of plane traffic.
And the difference between the material, we, we have a small tractor with a loader and the truck. The difference between these two is?
Substantial. I mean, you can move a lot more with, with a larger piece of equipment.
And we'll meet the safety requirements with this, that it's from six inches to three feet?
Yep.
This is my one point out, too, right now with plowing with a truck. It's hard to see the edges of the runway, and they're constantly driving off, no fault to there, it's been in the deeper snow. So, this will help eliminate that, that problem. All right, Mr. Rossbert?
And again, time is of the essence to get this, so we have it for the winters, and this is also a piece of, the city would have the ability, should we need it somewhere else in the city, we can go down and use it, take it back down there. So, we, we're going to suspend and call that also.
That'll be 25-088.
Item number four. I could speak to that item. This is, we are currently in a five-year agreement with the FBO. That agreement does not begin on January 1 and end on December 31st, so we're getting ready to enter into our fourth year. This would authorize us to make that fourth year's payment pursuant to the five-year contract. Mr. Rossbert?
And again, we're going to suspend and call, because we need to keep them whole and keep the airport operating.
Okay, then item number five? Item number five is for the purchase of another CXT brand concrete bathroom structure. This would actually be as part of the new freed park improvements here. As the council may recall, with our previous orders of similar units, they take about six to eight months to work their way through lead times and approvals at the state. So, we'd like to get that ordered now, so that we'll have it onsite when we're ready.
And again, suspended call, so we can get this in and get the park up.
All right.
That'll be 25-090.
And then, number six? That also is one of mine. This comes out of safety. We discussed leasing a vehicle in the police department, and this would be our authorization to enter into those lease agreement documents.
The chief did a very good presentation of why it makes sense and everything. That's why we chose to go with it.
Sounds good. Councilmember Copley, we take that, please.
No, it's a suspended call.
25-091.
All right, that takes us to our regular agenda. Okay, brings us to our regular agenda. Ordinance 25-077.
I could speak to it. This is the, it's set for a public hearing first. This is a public hearing because there is a zoning change. The PUD is a zone. This was part of the pre-annexation agreement that this council has always spoke to. This is the direct and exact copy of that, but there is a public hearing set for that. I know there's, local rule says that we don't vote on the same time, so certainly after that public hearing, we can move it to fourth.
Okay. And then next, we have Councilmember Rossbert. Ordinance 25-080, on second reading.
And I think we need to move this along, so we can get, this is for the pavilion structure.
Yep.
It's, I think we need to move it along, so we can get it ordered and get the park launched. I'll call this tonight.
It's on second reading.
Would you have a problem amending it to 300,000?
I have.
What are we doing? What would you wish to do?
We will, I mean.
We just had a discussion where you talked about amending the price.
Pardon?
We just had a discussion where you talked about amending the amount.
Yeah. Let's, we'll amend it to, we'll amend it to 300,000, and then we'll go for a supplemental if need be.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Law Director Proudfoot, do we need, do we need specific language for that, to amend it?
No, we just need a motion and to make that amendment, whatever it may be, moving it to 300,000, and then have a.
Then have a, read the amended ordinance.
And then read the amended ordinance, and then you can see the vote.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Mr. President, Mr. Rossbert, I would just ask that you also amend 25-081, and then the subsequent 25-074. They're all related for that structure, so.
Okay.
So, that amendment should carry through. One amendment, and it'll take all three? Is that what you were saying?
We have to do each one.
Each one?
We have to do three of them.
You have to amend each one, sorry. Okay, thank you. And then what are you going to do with that, you know, on second reading?
Pardon?
You're on second reading on that? You going to move to third, or suspend and call?
I would like to suspend and call that, so we can get this, get something ordered.
Okay. The next one.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On 25-074, the pavilion structure at a cost of $450,000, you're going to lower that to 400,000, correct? Did you have a $100,000 placeholder?
That's right.
And then the 300,000 that we're proving?
Correct, correct. That's how that would work.
So, it'd be $400,000 amended.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I have the reading.
No, that's correct. So, 25-081, Mr. Rossbert?
So, I'll amend that to, to read 300 also, and then suspend and call it.
Okay. And 25-085, Mr. Copley?
We said that we would take, go one reading on it, and I didn't hear any comments, or anyone else, anyone else didn't hear any comments, we was going to pass it. Because of summer coming, it's important to get it in place, so I will suspend and call. If no one has a problem with that.
That's fine.
All right. 25-048, Mr. Yurcheck.
When do we want to talk about it?
Right now.
Right now. Okay. I might as well give you, I didn't catch it before you walked in, but here's a copy of some questions. I don't know if you guys want to read through these real quick. I think now, you know, we're voting on whether or not, or can vote tonight, on whether or not to annex this land, and I know there's some questions out there, and regardless that we start council late, I think it's important for everyone to ask the questions in front of all of us. So, I guess we'll start. Susan, you have any questions on the annexation?
No, I'm in favor of it.
I'm in favor of it.
Jeannie?
This is for the.
I don't think we, are we doing a straw vote? Is that?
No, I'm just asking if people have.
No, I know.
Oh, well, yeah. I have no questions.
In favor or not.
Okay, I have no questions.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. Are they allowed to say whether or not they're in favor of this annexation? Generally, you shouldn't.
No.
You know.
Not until it comes time to vote.
Just discuss the aspects of it.
But are there things, unanswered questions that will hold you back from making a decision? I think that's a better way to put it.
Yeah.[1739.82]
We've got another two weeks, or over two weeks, before we actually have to make a decision on the annexation. I am not against the annexation. I just want to know what the cost to our tax base is going to be if we do the annexation. Okay? So, that's why I provided these seven questions to John. John and I had a few discussions today. I got some of my questions answered. I've also provided the same questions to the developer.
Okay, I just got them right now, so.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Happy to work my way through all these questions, give you an answer.
Yeah, I mean, I don't expect the answers tonight on them. I mean, but I think it's things that need to be answered, you know, because we have firing EMS levies, we have library levies. What's the impact of those, you know, to all the residents, just not here?
If we decide to do the TIF financing, and if we decide.
If you decide to do TIF, you proposed three different things, I think.
There's lots of different ways of looking at it. There's a, we don't require anything approach, and then there's no funding necessary there. We want everything, we want that's pursuant to our comprehensive plan. Then we need significant money, and how are we going to pay for it? Are we going to pay for it through a 75-10 TIF, a 90-100 no school TIF? Are we going to do it through impact fees? Are we going to do it through issuing debt? Whatever, and that's what I was tasked with slowing down and involving council in those decisions. So, I want to do that in, but I would say this, that those decisions and the question of whether or not to annex are not necessarily the same thing.
Right, I understand.
And the PUD. So, if you want time to understand it, I'm certainly willing to do that. And if that's the case, I would just point out that June 3 is the last council meeting we have prior to that 120 days becoming up, which turns into an automatic no, which is troubling, given our pre-annexation agreement.
My questions are having to do with the cost of the improvements and not the annexation itself. And I made those clear.
Who else haven't we heard from?
Mr. Rossberg?
I have questions, but they are things that don't necessarily pertain to the annexation itself. So, my questions go forward.
I would say this, for years, we have done the annexation first, followed by zoning second, followed by the engineering third. That's kind of generally the way we did it. We tried to push it all together this time, and this is part of the problem. They get confused and convoluted. So, to do it where we do an annexation now, a zoning next time, and then talk about the funding mechanism isn't odd. We've done that for the entire time.
This is the first time, other than the commercial development, we've had a TIF involved.
Absolutely.
You know, so this is another moving part.
Possibly having a TIF involved.
Yeah, exactly. But it's been proposed. They were proposed TIF.
But if we decide that we are not going to, if we cannot come to an agreement on the funding mechanism, we still have the opportunity to not move forward with this project, and what we end up with is zone property in the city of Wadsworth. So, I, I'm going to go ahead and call the question.
You're going to call it? Okay. 25-064, Mr. Stugmeyer.
We'll call that this evening.
And 25-074, Mr. Rossberg?
That's going to be the amended.
Yeah.
And we'll call that at all.
Suspending, or no, you're going to call it after it's amended?
After amended, then we'll suspend and call it, yes.
All right. Then, we have the last one is the 25-077, Mr. Yurcheck.
I got to put that, I'll move that to fourth, since we have a public hearing on it.
Yeah, okay. Any other business?
I would just like to add something, going back to the pocket park. And I mentioned this at public ways. I think it's very, very important not to forget about restrooms down there. And I know Mr. Hiscock had mentioned it would be part of the downtown plan, but, you know, little kids are going to need to, everybody's going to need to use a restroom at some point, and we need to have restrooms in that area, I think. So, that's what I asked. Very, very important.
Okay. Nothing else on entertaining a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Or adjourn? please come to order. We please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing for the invitation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, who has given us this good land to be our heritage, we acknowledge our dependence upon you for all things, and we thank you for all your blessings, including the right and privilege to govern ourselves in this free land. We pray that you would grant us all wisdom to make good decisions for the future of this community. To Christ our Lord we pray, amen.
Amen.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hanlon?
Here.
Copley?
Here.
Heinz?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Rossberg?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Yurcheck?
Here.
And Williams?
Here. You've all had the opportunity to review the minutes for the regular city council meeting on May 7, 2025. May have a motion to approve them.
I'll make that motion to accept our regular, our council meeting minutes from May the 7.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes for the regular city council meeting of May 7, 2025 are approved. Tonight, we have a proclamation for EMS. Will the mayor please come?
It's my pleasure this evening to provide a proclamation to two of our dedicated members of our EMS team. We have firefighter medic Valance and lieutenant Plath. Come on in. We are so grateful, and all of us know how fortunate we are to have the dedicated workforce that we have protecting us in our times of need. We recognize the importance of your services that you provide for those that are in need of those services. We hope that we don't need them, but we are grateful that you are there with me. We have a special acknowledgement for National EMS Week from May 18 through the 24th. In honor of this, and it states, "Communities across the nation will observe National EMS Week from May 18 through the 24th, recognizing the dedicated members of emergency medical services who are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas this year's theme, 'We Care for Everyone,' honors the history, sacrifice, and unwavering commitment to those who provide this essential service. It serves as a key reminder of the critical role EMS professionals play in saving lives and supporting communities in times of need. And whereas access to timely and effective emergency care significantly improves the survival and recovery rates of individuals experiencing sudden illness or injury, we acknowledge and are deeply grateful for the skill, efficiency, and compassion demonstrated by our Wadsworth EMS staff. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Robin L. Lawbaugh, am proud to proclaim May 18 through the 24th to be set aside and observed as National EMS Week in the city of Wadsworth in recognition of the courageous and invaluable service provided by these dedicated men and women. Signed and sealed this 20th day of May 2025, Robin L. Lawbaugh, Mayor of Wadsworth." We are so grateful to you and for your expertise. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. [applause]
Well, Madam Mayor and city council members, I appreciate this. Very thankful for receiving this. Obviously, every year, it's recognized during this year, or during this week every year. But as I meet people out in the public, people have come up to me before and thanked me for my service, and I've always thanked veterans. And one gentleman quite a few years ago had answered me back and said it's an honor and a privilege, and that kind of took me aback, you know. Usually, I didn't get a response. So, I've given that same answer to people now in the community, because without the people in the community supporting the levies and things like that, we won't be able to do the job. So, I do appreciate the support from the community. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing. Council will now hold a public hearing on ordinance 25-077 with regards to the Vance PUD. Will the clerk please read the ordinance title?
Ordinance number 25-077, and ordinance to rezone city lot number 9850 to Vance Farms' planned unit development, and to establish Vance Farms' planned unit development zoning for three parcels in Wadsworth Township upon annexation into the city of Wadsworth, which are currently identified as PPNS 038-17B-12-009, 038-17B-12-011, and 038-17B-12-016, and to adopt Vance Farms' PUD district regulations that are consistent with the pre-annexation agreement previously adopted by city council and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I'd like to invite Economic Development Director Tom Morris to speak about ordinance number 25-077.
Come up here, we're going to do it from table. Doesn't matter.
Also, we can hear you.
Mr. Kaiser, the planning director should have given you all a copy of the memorandum he prepared. He wasn't able to be here tonight, but one of the things he did prior to this is having a planning commission meeting. Anytime you change zoning, you're going to have a hearing, two places, a public hearing. You're going to have a public hearing here before you, as well as with planning commissions with recommendations. That occurred, there was two people who spoke to it, but more towards the engineering part of it, not towards the zoning part of it. So, the planning commission made the recommendation to pass it as it was written. I would say that this PUD that you're looking at, or that is, is the same one that is attached to the pre-annexation agreement. It's verbatim. So, what we're doing here is not necessarily trying to, you know, it's to execute what we've already agreed to, which you've already spoken to in your, when you passed the legislation authorizing the signature of that particular document. This has nothing to do with the extras. We've talked about that in, a little bit in committee of the whole. That is a separate issue, and we'll deal with that as we come along. This only is to execute what we've already agreed to, what you've already agreed to, which is bringing the property in, that is, annexation, and then zoning it pursuant to the PUD or the planned unit development, which is attached, which is verbatim. I know that this, typically do not do it on first, or the, right after the public hearing, so certainly there's no issue with moving that to fourth, so that it can be addressed at that time.
Any questions from council?
None.
Hearing none? I'd like to open the council hearing for public comment. Any speakers who would like to come to the podium, one at a time, state your name and address for the record. We ask that you keep your comments brief, under three minutes. Is there anybody in the chambers who would like to address this item? Seeing none, we'll close the. Public hearing for ordinance 25-077 is now closed. Per the rules of council number 17, council does not typically vote on the legislation on the night of a public hearing. Council in times does suspend rule 17, but I don't think we should tonight. Are there any other visitors who would like to address council? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments brief, two to three minutes. Seeing none, are there any correspondents?
There is no correspondence.
Okay. It moves us to committee commissions and hearings.
Hold on here, let me get my, where is it at?
We just had a public hearing on the PUD. Public Service Committee, council member Stugmeyer.
Public Service Committee will next meet on Tuesday, June 10, 5:30 PM here in council chambers.
Safety Committee, council member Copley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next meeting of the Public Safety Committee will be on Wednesday, June 11, at 4:30 PM here in council chambers.
Mr. Rossberg, Public Ways Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will next meet on Monday, June 9, at 6 o'clock here in council chambers.
Councilmember Yurcheck, Economic Development and Planning.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development and Planning will next meet on Monday, June 9, at 5 PM in council chambers.
Committee of the whole met tonight at 5:50, numerous items. Commission and boards, Airport Commission, council member Stugmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Airport Commission will meet tomorrow evening, Wednesday, May 21, here 4 PM in council chambers.
Stormwater Commission, council member Copley.
Next meeting of Stormwater Commission will be on July 8, at 5 o'clock PM prior to the Public Service Committee meeting here in council chambers.
Shade Tree Commission, council member Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Shade Tree Commission will meet on Tuesday, May 27, at 5 PM here in council chambers.
Very good. Planning Commission will next meet on Monday, June 9, at 4 PM in council chambers. Cemetery Board, council member Yurcheck.
Cemetery Board will next meet tomorrow evening at 5 PM in council chambers.
Cable TV Commission, council member Hanlon.
The Cable TV Commission will next meet on Thursday, June 5, at 4 o'clock in council chambers.
Thank you. Senior Citizens Commission, council member Parrish.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Senior Citizens Commission will meet next on June 9, at 3:30 at the Supremum Center, and I encourage all of you to stop in for breakfast or lunch. They have a wonderful cafe.
Okay.
And some fellowship.
That brings us to the reading of the legislation. Will clerk please read the legislation?
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll start with our first readings this evening. We have ordinance number 25-086 on first reading sponsored by council member Dan Rossberg and discussed at public ways, and ordinance authorizing and directing the interim director of public service to advertise for, receive bids, and enter into a contract for the 2025 CDBG sidewalk improvement project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance 25-086.
Second.
Excuse me. Yurcheck?
Yes.
Rossberg?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
And Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-0886.
Hearing no objection, council member Rossberg's proposal called a question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-086?
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossberg?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
And Yurcheck?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-086 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-087 on first reading sponsored by council member Dan Rossberg and discussed at public ways, and ordinance authorizing and directing the interim director of public service to advertise for and receive bids and enter into a contract for the city street sweeping and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move we suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-087.
Second.
Rossberg?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-087.
Hearing no objection, council member Rossberg's proposal called a question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-087?
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Rossberg?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Rossberg?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
And Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-088.
Hearing no objection, council member Rossberg's proposal called a question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-088?
Hanlon?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Rossberg?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
And Rossbert?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-088 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-089 on first reading sponsored by council member Dan Rossbert and discussed at public waste. An ordinance authorizing the interim director of public service to pay flight services of Wadsworth LLC for services rendered from June 1st, 2025, through May 31st, 2026, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-089.
Second.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
And Yurcheck?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-089.
Hearing no objection to council member Rossbert's proposal called a question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-089?
Heinz?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
And Rossbert?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-089 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-090 on first reading sponsored by council member Dan Rossbert and discussed at public waste. An ordinance authorizing the interim director of public service to purchase a restroom structure from CXT Precast Concrete Products through participation in Sourcewell contract and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-090.
Second.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
And Rossbert?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-090.
Hearing no objection to council member Rossbert's proposal called a question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-090?
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
And Rossbert?
Yes. Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-090.
Hearing no objection to council member Rossbert's proposal called a question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-090?
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
And Parrish?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-090 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-091 on first reading sponsored by council member Ralph Copley and discussed at public safety. An ordinance authorizing the director of public safety to enter into a lease agreement with Enterprise Entity and Enterprise Fleet Management Incorporated for the lease of one vehicle for the Wadsworth Police Department through a Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-091.
Second.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
And Yurcheck?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-091.
Hearing no objection to council member Copley's proposal called a question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-091?
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
And Rossbert?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-091 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-092 on first reading sponsored by council member Ralph Copley. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and the interim director of public service of the city of Wadsworth, Ohio, to enter into a contract with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers in regard to electric workers local number 306 in the Wadsworth Electric Distribution Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-092.
Second.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
And Rossbert?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-092.
Hearing no objection to council member Copley's proposal called a question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-092?
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
And Hanlon?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-092 has been adopted.
And our second readings this evening, ordinance number 25-080 on second reading sponsored by council member Dan Rossbert and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to authorize transfer of $400,000 for the installation of a structure for the SW Southwest Parking Lot Project for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to amend ordinance number 25-080 to read an ordinance to authorize the transfer of $300,000 for the installation of a structure for the Southwest Parking Lot Project for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and declaring it an emergency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-080 has been amended.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on amended ordinance number 25-080.
Second.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
And Rossbert?
Yes.
Amendment to ordinance number 25-080 has been approved.
Adopted. Ordinance number 25-081 on second reading sponsored by council member Dan Rossbert and discussed at committee of the whole. An ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $400,000 in various funds for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to amend ordinance number 25-081 to read an ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $300,000 in various funds for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and to declare an emergency. Mr. President, I move to amend ordinance number 25-081 to read an ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $300,000 in various funds for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and declare it an emergency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-081 has been amended.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on amended ordinance number 25-081.
Heinz?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
And Rossbert?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on amended ordinance number 25-081.
Hearing no objection to council member Rossbert's proposal called a question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of amended ordinance number 25-081?
Heinz?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Amendment to ordinance number 25-081 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-085 on second reading sponsored by council member Ralph Copley and discussed at public safety. An ordinance to enact Section 75.11 of the Municipal Code of Ordnances of the city of Wadsworth, which is to be added and amends the Municipal Code of Ordnances, establishing operation of all purpose vehicles on private property, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-085.
Second.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Hanlon?
Yes.
Rossbert?